Are we ready, Douglas?
All right. Mr. Chairman, we are live.
Okay, welcome everybody online. Today's Monday, August 29th. This is our weekly county commissioner meeting. At this time, I would please ask everyone to rise to say the pledge. Monica, would you lead us, please?
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Monica, for doing that. Get right on into our agenda. Is there any additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Make the motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Moved in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So we'll get into claims, board order claims, junior college. Good morning, Rita, good to see you.
Good morning.
I think this is one of the smaller claims we've ever had, isn't it?
It is. There's a portion of it, there were, happened to be three claims that were submitted during the claim period that were missed. Wanted to make sure that those got paid. And then we had a long period after for claims again, and so I just included all of those that we already had in the office.
And we don't have any junior college, correct?
Not this time. We will next time.
So if everybody's good with those, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve the claims, board order claims, and no junior college.
I second it.
Moved in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Have to gather here.
My pens.
Miss one. Okay, we'll move right on down to our agenda. These are all action items. The meeting minutes are August 22nd. Everybody have a chance to look at those?
I read them, I sent Doug one question, because I didn't, it was, it didn't make sense to me what happened when you came out of indigent.
Yeah, we just approved the claim that was submitted under indigent. I just clarified that on the minutes.
Okay, okay, perfect.
There was one last claim that was hanging on.
Very big claim.
Yeah.
So I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I will abstain since I wasn't here.
I'll second that. This is approved, the meeting minutes are August 22nd. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a proclamation. Monica, come on up to the mic, please. Maybe give us a little insight and let the public know what we're doing.
Sure. We submitted a draft of a proclamation to celebrate Recovery Month, National Recovery Month, and.
Monica, I apologize, just for the record, can you state your name and the company that you're affiliated with?
Yes, Monica Forbes, The Rock. And so September is National Recovery Month. The Rock is going to be hosting a recovery rally next Saturday at Oak Love Park in McCall. And last year, we asked you and you generously agreed to sign a proclamation making September Recovery Month in Valley County as well. And Commissioner Mopin came and read that there before we almost got blown into the lake, but we are just asking again if you would please consider the citizens of Valley County that live with mental health and substance use disorder and sign the proclamation making it Recovery Month in Valley County as well.
Okay.
I would be honored to make a motion to approve the proclamation to designate September as Valley County Recovery Month.
And I'll second that.
Moved in second, and any more discussion? I disagree with the idea, and I really appreciate all the, not only this, but all the years of effort and energy that you've put into Valley County. And it means a lot, so.
It's my pleasure.
You got a motion, second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you. Can I give you guys a flyer with the schedule on the back?
Yep, yep, come on up.
I just put four copies in there, so.
Monica, do you mind taking that document and taking it to our office? They can record it.
Yes.
And then we can have that recorded. Yep.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd have a conversation about education in the schools.
Okay.
So we should have, we should have that conversation. I have lunch, yeah.
You saw me in that?
Yes.
And thanks for bringing that up, Jerry, because I understand that they found some of the rainbow fentanyl in Oregon, and I'm just wondering if we should be doing something here to notify our schools. I'm sure you guys probably already are.
We're trying. And we're working for SCAC Youth Advocacy Coalition's in our office, and so we are doing our best to get into the schools.
Good.
And do something. But also, we're doing some town hall meetings again like we did before we opened The Rock.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
We lost, we lost from fentanyl already, so, you know, our coroner is seeing it.
It's all around.
And that's, yeah.
It's just like, seems to be a little bit slow coming up here.
Thank God.
Extra here, Monica.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if Doug needed a copy.
Yeah, you want a copy of this? Yeah, I have one of those.
Oh, you already do, okay.
Yep. We're good.
But we need to do something before it takes hold.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Monica.
Thank you, Monica.
Use hours.
Use hours.
Okay, our next item is also an agenda item. This is agreement for a special event on property owned and controlled by Valley County, and I believe this is for a memorial for one of our local guys, and they are actually going to put on a little rodeo.
They're having one right in there.
And I know that, I think he got his insurance policy in, is there, what else we need, Scott? Have we got everything else?
I've talked with him. He's got his equipment, he wants the arena, they have a water truck, they have an ambulance, a frame, ambulance there. And we, we ultimately had to do some work on everything, there's some damage on the rodeo. I know about it.
I told them that we would waive the fee to use the arenas because it was an event for, a memorial event.
This is August 8th, what day of the week is that?
No, it's September 3rd, it's this weekend.
September 4th.
Fourth, Sunday, September 4th.
This is when it was entered into an August.
So we just needed an agreement to waive off that, the fee.
I think four.
I didn't know there was a fee, so.
That's a Sunday?
It's my first one, my first event I've been to.
And I didn't know that he'd gotten the forms, and I sent him the form, so I'm glad to hear.
I was on the.
Yeah, so there's a calendar out there, and you and I probably need to visit on how we're going to keep that calendar up to date, so when people actually want to use it, we need to put it on that calendar. I actually had Tamara Adiu as one of the, will it compose there?
And the damage from the rodeo, who's, are you fixing that, or is the rodeo group going to fix?
Yeah, I don't know, because I don't think the airport has any funds or no one, or I don't know.
Is it pretty major?
I don't know, I've got, I'm going to meet Toby there after September.
Okay.
And we're going to look at it, he said probably a couple hundred dollars, two by six and five.
So at this time, we need a motion to approve not only the event itself, but that it is no charge for the use of the facility.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the event for the memorial on September 4th and waive the fee that would normally be charged by Valley County.
I'll second it. Don't you say, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
We're going to be charging a $250 fee for the event.
We have to be scheduled or something. I also have another, I had a request, they're filling out the form, people were for a spook house.
And I had Oak update that form, so Ed's name's on there instead of, I think Dave's was, I can't remember which form I sent out, but Dave's name was still on it, and Oak updated it for him.
I have, I have.
You have the updated?
All the stuff.
Okay. Okay, perfect.
Hey, if we're done, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is also an action item. This is the fiscal year 23 indigent defense grant finance assistance, and this is kind of an annual thing we do every year, and for indigent defense, public defense. So I need a motion to approve this agreement.
So on this.
Probably, you got it this morning at 7:15 from Doug. Should be on your email this morning at 7:15.
Well, anyway, I guess it probably doesn't, general thing, yeah.
Well, it's kind of a renewal thing that they, they help with public defense and indigent defense. And Doug, maybe you can explain it better than I can, but it's an annual thing.
So three years ago, counties could start applying for the state, through the state, the Public Defense Commission to receive additional funding to assist with the cost of public defense. This is going to be, I don't know if this is going to be the last year for this grant, but definitely next year is going to be the last year for this grant, as the state is now going to pay, be paying for this all directly, using revenue from sales tax.
Okay.
That money, at this point in time, will be coming to the counties to make that distribution, but in 2025, after the program is developed, statewide, public defense is developed, this is the process to fund a public defense.
Okay, yeah.
But in 2025, that will be eliminated, and the public defenders in the state of Idaho will more than likely be compensated or paid by the state directly.
Yeah.
How much is this for?
This is for $69,000.
Well, thank you, thank you, Douglas.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve this fiscal year 23 indigent defense grant officials assistance agreement.
I'll second.
Move in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, and all three, sign this. Okay, our next agenda item is also an action item. This is to sign the Idaho Transportation Department Local Professional Services agreements, and I believe we have two of them. Jeff, you kind of want to explain this so that everybody kind of knows.
So these are both for the East Side Drive Bridge replacement. Things are moving pretty quickly on that. These are through Idaho Transportation Department. One is for the agreement with Keller and Associates to be the engineer on record. And second one is for Civil Science Incorporated. They were chosen through the scoring process to be the construction engineer on the bridge.
It's still going to happen this fall?
Yes. Yep, I finished my email to Mackenzie earlier this morning to put blast out, she's going to contact City McCall, possibly the newspaper, it's foreclosure, there won't be a bridge there. Here we go.
Which bridge is this again, Jeff?
East Side Drive.
Jeff, they decided, I'm sorry, they decided not to kind of plow that east side and just work from the west side?
They're going to have equipment on the other side, and they will plow as needed, but they're hoping to.
Mostly war.
They're going to leave everything on the east side of the bridge, probably just the crane.
Yeah.
And then when they're done with the bridge, they can drive that crane out across the new bridge and Mount Warren Wagon will be gone.
Yeah, yeah.
How long will it be closed for?
It's scheduled through January.
Wow.
9th, I think. We got 80, 88 working days, I believe.
And then there's a little finish up process in the spring.
Yep, go back and do a dress up and then pave everything.
Jeff, is that a big R bridge?
No.
This is a concrete structure?
Huge, 130-foot-long concrete bridge.
Big bridge.
No piers in it, single span.
I'm going to make a motion then that we sign the Idaho Transportation Department Local Professional Services Agreements number 96348 and 96350. Have a second?
I'll second it.
Moved in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Question, they're making us, or not making us, but we are putting bike paths on one side, is that right?
The bridge will be wide enough for both sides.
What's the starting date again, Jeff?
September 12th. Yeah, September 12th.
12.
Yep, road will be closed, the whole signage will be up.
If we see the coke and heat, we're going to have to go from Warren Wagon side, and we can't get into the bridge to look at them, so.
Are they going to plow, snow plow?
Just, just that little section of Warren Wagon Road, probably about a quarter mile long, and they've already arranged. They got a couple of contractors they're talking to up there. Dave Binghamman was at the meeting last week for the recreational site because of the snow grooming, it'll push them out just a couple few weeks from grooming up there.
So unrelated topic, Jeff, are you, are you, how much work are you doing on the fire there for grading and stuff?
Just, we just went through there last week, took us, I don't even know if it took us a day to get through there.
Okay, that's it, and you're pretty much done there.
Yeah, that should hold them for a while.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay, our next agenda item is another action item. This is signed to Valley County Contract Routing and Approval Cover Sheet. Jeremy, come on up and give us a little clue on this one.
If this, so this is the approval for the internet connection at Lake Fork.
Did you send us that? Is that in our packet?
I did, no, I forgot to send it to Doug when I asked to have it put on the agenda. I have it right here, though, I apologize.
Okay, can you, yeah, kind of tell us what, what the final figure was on all that?
We have two more items before that.
So the Wink will add another 9,000 a year, that Doug has already put in the, put enough in the line item that Zipley gets paid out of for that, as well as for whatever we need to do with the Maritimo Building, should that.
So that's going to cover that too, is what you're saying?
No, 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 it's not. This is just for Lake Fork.
And it was 9,000 a year?
Yes.
750, okay. I had in my head was 750, but.
These days, satellite's going to overtake these guys, and, I mean, there's a business link now with Starlink for less than that.
So it's, their, Starlink's business, I already looked at it, it's 500 bucks a month, so it's actually not that much cheaper, and the speeds are nowhere near.
Oh, no, okay.
Nowhere near this, so.
So it's worth the increased cost at this moment in time?
Absolutely, yes. I still think, my, my personal opinion for your house, it's fine, but for business, it's still so new that I'd be kind of hesitant to be a guinea pig for satellite internet at this point.
Guy up here that's a cybersecurity expert, and he's telling me that it's all that and then some, and it's fine. So someday, we'll have to look at that if we have other sites that are not easily accessed. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the Zipley internet agreement for the Lake Fork building.
I'll second that.
And move forward ASAP.
Move in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Jeremy, when's that going to be in?
Once I get this to Natalie, then she'll put it in the work order, and.
Hope he's still having fast stuff.
Trevor, she's going to look at it. I think the, I think Valley County is on the right. They say 90 days, but that's not, doesn't mean it's going to take 90 days, that's just how long they give themselves.
Yeah.
I guess it'll come down to how busy they are and.
Is any of our infrastructure at risk?
Yeah.
Up there on that fire? I know they undergrounded this stuff up to Snowbank, the Idaho Power did, anyway.
Yeah.
But is Zipley's?
I don't know what's running along West Mountain.
We might want to contact them just to see if we're at risk at all, because I know it's coming up Barton, isn't it? I don't know if they came underground with all of that stuff, or if it's overhead. We might want to just clarify to make sure we're not.
I can ask.
Doug, do we need two commissioners signing this?
I think just one is fine, Mr. Chairman. They'll probably sign that.
Doug, did we get the, I don't think we got the contract routing and approval cover sheet, but.
No.
I mean, we were, it was introduced to us by Oak before, so we've seen it.
I don't know why that's on the agenda, commissioners.
Is this what you're talking about?
Yeah, can I look at that before you?
Yes.
Just kind of see what it's going to look like.
We were officially approving it as use, so.
I thought we already had, but we can clarify if you want to make a motion to approve that form now, that's going to be utilized for any new contracts. It's working out very well, we're, I think the department heads are adjusting to the requirement, so.
I think it's just a statement from us that that is the expectation.
Why it was added to the agenda.
All those signatures are on there.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve as our policy that when new contracts are presented, that the Valley County Contract Routing and Approval Cover Sheet accompany that contract.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy, appreciate it. I'll second that. I guess my only concern before we vote is that we've got to make sure that, that our wildlife wildfire mitigation group knows this, because we do a lot of those landowner contracts, and I have never seen one on one of those. So I have to let staff know, but. You have a motion in the second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And we'll move on down to the last item. This is also an action item, to sign a credit card agreement with the Forest Service for the four corners.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think you received that document. This was something that was added to the agenda late on Thursday. If.
They're setting us up as a vendor.
If Facilities Director Scott Kling could come to the mic and present on this.
Yeah, what happened, I guess, is Lake Shore wasn't able to provide them with any trash containers out there for some reason, so Steffi Cade from the Forest Service took a government card up to the transfer site and gave it to Summer, and then explained what she needed, so Summer had her contact me. She did say Summer was very helpful up there with her and stuff. So what this is, this agreement is basically setting us up as a vendor for the, for them, it's part of their requirement for use of their card. We've got it set up that we'll keep all receipts and stuff, and it's got a $10,000 limit on it, and once the fire is over, they'll come collect all their receipts and stuff, and that is.
So who will be using the card?
We will be.
Oh, okay.
It'll be, it's, we have it on file at the transfer site.
So.
Lake Shore couldn't, for some reason, there's no room, or the ground wasn't, they couldn't, there were fire boxes, so they're going to haul their own trash up there, and then they'll pay, we'll have the card, is what we'll have.
This is your roll up won't fit at site?
Yeah, I'm not quite sure.
I don't understand that.
I don't either, but.
Apparently they just don't want to deal with it.
Yeah, this is the route they wanted to go with it, so she's already taken the card up there, and we have it.
Now, do I, we are the vendor?
We're the vendor, yeah. They're sending us up, yeah, we're kind of reverse the roles here, is what it's kind of doing, and she said, and what I'll do is, once you sign that, I'll send that to her, she will sign it, and send us back a full executive, you know.
I'll make a motion that we sign the credit card agreement with the Forest Service for the Four Corners fire.
I'll second.
Move in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Doug, you going to want a copy of this?
Yes, please.
Okay, we've got about four minutes until our next agenda item, which is Pickleball Club, so if you need a break, this would be the time to take it.
Hey, Jeff, you and I need to talk about Damon and his request where they're in West Mountain. That's, he's, he's telling me that he has been walking that site, and there are no scales there, and I just need to know what we can do and what we can't do, and.
Somebody misunderstood, the scales are in there.
Okay. Okay.
Can we get him to come in and help fix the road, though?
How often are you having?
Yeah, we talked about that, Doug.
Maybe we should, but, how, how often are you having to grade that road? Oh, it's pavement. So it's tearing up West Mountain headed north? You could drive out there.
So who's doing all this?
Coming out of the pit. So we just have to keep it on our list then, as far as maintenance, and maybe a higher maintenance schedule. I'll go take a drive out there now, coming out of the pit.
You going to go now?
Yeah.
What do you think?
In north, we've got a guy that's pretty upset that, you know, we're having to take care of that, and that, no one's participating with us, but that's what those road maintenance agreements are about, that's a pre-existing pit, you know, so a new pit came in, and we'd make them do it.
So what we're, what we're basically experiencing is, is just a huge amount of traffic on that side, and a lot of it's heavy traffic. When we had those people that, who was it, Naff River, applied for permit there, we, we denied that because of just this very thing, it's just too much of that type of traffic, you know, north there, and that, you know, in, in theory, they would probably supply the state a lot of stuff out of that pit. And so then they, they moved over and tried to get a permit over here on Highway 55, which is denied, you know, so. Yeah, and I remember asking the same question, well, you know, if you don't have, you know, your processing plant there, do you just, now you just haul it to someplace else, and well, pretty much what's happening.
You got to have the product, so.
Yeah.
You know, if that's what they have available, that's what they have available, so.
Well, it's just, to me, it's just reinforces, at least my opinion, that we probably need to be doing, looking at something a little bit different on that west side going forward in road maintenance, because that's going to be a real, is your experience. Yeah, and, yeah, it's.
What have we done on smiling? We had talked about improving that this year. What have we done on smiling? We had talked about improving that this year.
Grading it mostly, don't you?
What's your plan to improve it? What is your plan to improve it?
That's gonna take a grind to get that.
Why do we need to buy right away if you're, I mean, the plan is?
All the usement.
Yeah. We talked about improving within whatever you have right now.
So we typically.
Mr. Mayor, good morning, I have you on and I see your face and unfortunately, the commissioners can't see you because I have the Valley County Pickleball Group's presentation on our screen. But I do wanna let you know that the commissioner should be able to hear you and you will be participating as well.
All right, thanks.
Good morning.
Okay, we're gonna move on down to our next agenda item, this is not an action item, this is a presentation from the County Pickleball Club. So I will turn it over to you final ladies and see where we go.
Good morning, thank you, I'm Evelyn Danville, I'm the president of the Valley County Pickleball Club and I, I hope you all know you might by now. Today, we're gonna present for about ten minutes, so you can hold your applause till the end. And on the phone, we have Kathy Muir with us, who is the Idaho Department of Parks and Recs Federal and State Grant Manager, are you there Kathy?
I am here.
Thank you for joining us, we may have some questions for you at the end. Our focus today is to talk about the U.S. Department of Interior Land and Water Conservation Fund. This is a National Park Service Assistance Program that provides fifty-fifty matching grants to and through the local units of government, Valley County, for the development of public outdoor recreation areas. So we thought this was a really good opportunity, it's a great deal to be able to get fifty-fifty funding where Valley County Pickleball would be funding half of our four hundred thousand dollar project and Land and Water Conservation Fund would be funding the other fifty percent. However, there are some requirements and that's what we wanna kinda present and focus on today. There's a document called the Idaho Statewide Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan. Now, I know it's, you know, a ninety-eight page document, somebody must've told them to keep it under a hundred pages. You all have that printed out and sitting right next to your toilet and you've been studying it every night, right?
Of course.
In the morning. Kathy is our expert on that, but in that plan, it's a five-year plan and they evaluate what are the upcoming best outdoor recreation opportunities and in that, on page thirty actually, Pickleball is identified as a high-demand activity. So I don't think, I think you guys kinda already, we've covered, you know, Hope would like to talk for about thirty minutes about why Pickleball is great, P-I-G, but we don't wanna spend too much time on that, other than just, you know, ensuring that you guys know that, you know, Pickleball has been in the news recently, you've seen it in the news on CBS, they had their first national match. It's the fastest-growing sport in the nation for three years now with a tremendous thirty-nine percent heart rate, growth rate. It's heart-healthy, it reduces anxiety, I could use it right now. It keeps people engaged socially, not just seniors, but it's for all ages now, families, it's a great family activity. It's low cost, it's pair tennis shoes and a paddle, it's for everyone, it's free and, you know, we need places to play, that's the issue. And so we hope that this park can become an anchor and not a ball and chain for the, for the county. So I wanna just kinda go over kinda where, where we are and what we've achieved so far together. So initially, in the fall of twenty twenty, Larry Laxson assisted us to identify potential location and kinda said, hey, this is something the county might be able to assist you guys with. Mary Rosen, we got in touch and met Mary Rosen and she identified that we would wanna attend some IDPR grant training, which Kathy Muir conducted and we attended. We decided there was, you know, a good enough opportunity and with the land being dedicated by the county that we're grateful for, that we established a Valley County Pickleball Club New Courts Committee. So, you know, it's just not me here in this cute t-shirt. We are actually a five oh one C three organization, we have a hundred-plus members. We have been a nonprofit for ten years. We have a committee of eight people that are all, primarily all retired volunteers that are overseeing our fundraising, construction, secretary, treasurer, co-chair. So basically, we're bona fide, we're invested, we're, we're, you know, into this and hope that you will be too. We executed the original MOU with the county in October of twenty, which basically defined kind of our common interest in agreement on this joint project. It states that VCPC will conduct the fundraising, both public and private, to build and operate the Pickleball Courts facility. That document actually needs an update, I think we were originally thinking high hopes that we'd be building this year, but we're not, but we, we did get the conditional use permit approved and the staff report completed and by the end of that year, we had reached twenty-five thousand dollars in fundraising. The next slide, in spring of twenty twenty-one, we conducted geotech soil surveys and what we found there on the initial surveying was the land was too low, it was in that lower pit area. And so Sherry recommended that we, you know, we came back to guys and Sherry recommended that we could maybe build on that higher area right on that corner. And so we had additional geotechnical survey completed and VCPC absorbed that cost of twenty-four hundred dollars. That would be something, if we get this Land and Water Conservation Fund approved, it would be qualified as a pre-award cost, so we could get reimbursed fifty percent on that. We had done surveying, do survey work that we also funded and that information was provided then to Crestline Engineering. By the end of twenty twenty-one, we had raised seventy-five thousand dollars. So this is all just pub, you know, public, small businesses and private donations. So in the spring of this year, we had the engineering, design and grading plan completed by Crestline Engineering. That was at a cost of seventy-six hundred and again, that's another pre-award eligible cost where we could be reimbursed half of that. We did a May fourth site visit, Kathy Muir came up and we met on this, at the site that we're gonna be developing. We had Dave Bingaman, Larry and Ed come into a little introductory meeting that we had there and talked a little bit about this Land and Water Conservation Fund and, and what it's all about and, and how it works. So we got approval from the parametrics or approval recommendation, Paul Ashton sent the letter to Cindy approving that engineering, design and grading plan. May sixteenth, when we last came in here and spoke with you to talk about the, the requirements of the county, if we were gonna go for this Land and Water Conservation Fund, it was decided at the time that there could be a larger county park area that could be encompassed and so we wanted to have that area defined and that was sort of the last directive. Larry and Jeff then came back to us in July with, basically, it's about a three-acre area kind of where the Pickleball Courts are and will actually allow us for an area for expansion if we, you know, if this thing really takes off and we wanna do additional funding and add even more courts. Right now, our plan is for nine courts. So we have pretty, by, by August fifteenth of this year, we have raised a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And so we are continuing and now we're really starting to focus on grants, we've applied for a few grants. We've gotten turned down on a few grants, just there's a lot of, you know, COVID recovery focus and stuff, so. But most of those grants said reapply next year and so we have hope for some grants and feel confident that we'll be able to reach the two hundred thousand dollar, you know, Valley County contribution match by the end of twenty twenty-three, which is when it would be awarded. So we kinda looked next at, this is the process and timeline. Kathy Muir is gonna be holding a specific Land and Water Conservation Fund Training Workshop in October. So we would hope, we definitely will attend that and would hope that county representatives, maybe Doug, maybe Dave Bingaman and Mary Rosen can attend, attend that. And March of twenty, oh, then, then you get into the actual writing of the application. The grant application itself is due in January of twenty twenty-three and there are quite a few elements. You know, you have to go through the processes to show that it, it's, you know, the land is owned by the county, there's verification that there's no bones of Indians, that it's not a historical site, there's just that the ground is drain water good, those kinds of things that we're not real familiar with, but Larry assures us it's probably pretty standard process for the county. In March of twenty twenty-three, we would be presenting our project to the Idaho Department of Parks and Recs Recreation Review Committee for scoring and there's a scoring sheet with any kind of project like this where they evaluate the quality and qualifications of the projects. So there's a pre-application review by the Na, National Park Service, all of those documents have to be in by April fifteenth and then in May, Idaho Park Boards approve their priority lists and, and move them forward to MPS for approval. So then comes the open funding window, this is when the Idaho State Department of Parks and Recreation officially submits the project to the National Park Service. This can take up to three months or a year, hopefully not longer, in order to receive the approval. MPS releases the project, the state executes the grant agreement with Valley County, the state issues the notice to proceed. So that's sort of the timeline and on the next slide, this is kind of our vision of, of the team that can make this happen. Kathy has agreed that she would be happy to consult with us on the application requirements and guide us through the process and she actually manages the state requirements to the National Park Service. Larry Laxson and Larry says probably a little less state Bingaman in planning because he's gotten pretty fully occupied, but those sort of, they're our liaisons to coordinate with the county offices administration. And then there would be Mary, Doug Miller, the Clerks and Treasurers Office, that really would be into the meat of handling the application process and working with Kathy, the Clerks and the Treasurers Office during the administration aspects and processes of the work of, and of course, we will participate one hundred percent in whatever you ask or tell us to do.
Besides jumping away.
Don't tell us to go away, please. So we're thinking, you know, most specifically, what are we asking you for? We're asking for attendance at that grant training seminar in October. We're asking for Mary Rosen, the grant writer, to assist with the planning and completing all of the prerequisite information that needs to be gathered and of course, with our participation. We feel like the MOU needs to be updated to outline the VCPC and county commitments and the county assumption of cost responsibilities. We would need the county to pay half, let's say an invoice comes in and it's for, you know, some, some cement company and they're doing a ten-foot wide walkway. Valley County Pickleball Club would pay half of that invoice, the county would pay half of that invoice and the county would submit for the reimbursement because we will have the two hundred thousand dollars, but we won't have four hundred thousand. And so that's where we are asking the county to assume that cost responsibility. We would also like to see, if possible, this fall, the County Roads Department remove the slash piles, the tree stumps, there's a couple more trees that need to be removed in the, where the parking lot area is gonna be and just basically level the ground. And Jeff, I understand that you are also having staffing challenges.
Christmas fund, Larry, Christmas fund.
Okay. Okay. Okay, that, that would be great, that would be something that would be very helpful. So then twenty twenty-three is the actual application that, which is due in January, so we really need to get going pretty quickly on some of these prerequisites to get things moving. And then twenty twenty-four is where we'd actually, thank you, is where we would actually ask the county to possibly do some budgeting. We are hoping that you might approve to handle the signage. There's a requirement for one sign for the Land and Water Conservation Fund that says this is blah, 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 you know, secure in perpetuity, open for public access, whatever that sign says. There will be a few parking and ADA access, you know, the sign that goes in front of those particular parking spaces and then probably street sign on the highway and on the road that say Valley County Pickleball. And you might've noticed there's a new sign there right now that says Valley County Pickleball for the Idaho Department of Transportation, we adopted that two miles of road and are gonna be taking care of the cleanliness of those two miles.
Nice, thank you.
Hold the applause. So then, of course, you know, there's labor hours involved and if, you know, Larry's been talking about, well, everyone kind of mentioned, our plan includes a porta potty and renting a porta potty, that's really all we could do in our budget. And Larry's mentioned the opportunity for the county to provide a vault toilet. If you wanna include that in this LWCF, that's a fifty-fifty match right there. If you don't, you know, that's fine too, whatever other process or funds you might have, but it's a great opportunity to go ahead and get that included. So that is basically our presentation today, wanna know if you have any questions and we, and we've got Kathy on the line for anything related specifically to the Land and Water Conservation Fund.
And the vault toilet totally makes sense, if we can get half of it paid for, we should do it while we're doing this, that makes sense to me. And that's gonna be part of the greater.
Larry, you gonna come to the mic so everybody can hear, please?
It'll be part of the greater conversation around having a public park there.
It would be a separate, separate grant, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I was, I was planning on, Larry Laxson, Valley County, are correct. I was planning on doing that as a separate, we're looking at, because this is gonna be a twenty-three, twenty-four budget, not twenty-two, twenty-three. And as we were talking, we've talked about putting some, a bike trail out there and a walking trail out there and then we do the vault toilet and RTP grant.
No, is that a Tubu Bay vault or a four bay?
Two, two bay and we were looking, because this is a county facility, we were gonna have the five-dollar parking permit like we do every place else, so they can get a seasonal parking permit and that'll help offset any costs for the maintenance of that vault toilet, the cleaning and pumping and all that.
What's the difference in price? If we can get half of it paid for, why not do a four instead of a two? Put that into a larger park facility.
We can look at that, we've got, we've got time to look at the possibilities of that, yeah. Right now, that we've, we're, we're planning the two, two, a double vault would be right around fifty thousand dollars. It's really gone up, but hey, things are slowing down, maybe they'll get cheaper by next year.
Maybe.
I have a question more for Jeff, I guess, than anybody, but it seems to me like we as commissioners, we gotta start thinking about that intersection in Highway fifty-five. If we've got recycle there, we're gonna have these folks there at intersection of Lake Fork, we, we've gotta get some turn lanes and stuff going on that or we're gonna have a lot more crashes. a lot more crashes. So can we submit a letter from the commission asking for that or would that help? That's, to me, that intersection is probably one of the worst in the valley. Takes some money.
So Jeff?
I'm sorry.
So Jeff, wouldn't we submit that with that project where you're talking about the review? In other words, explain the, explain that project that you're kind of tying that to?
Last section of East Lake Fork Road from the bridge to the highway.
Okay.
We're just getting that thing rolling. Got the engineering firm working on it. They've done surveys, got to buy right of way all the way up through there. And once we get up to the highway, that's, that's what we're working on, trying to figure out how to get that intersection widened out. And I had them looking at turn lanes off the highway. Where the store sits, like the Merc, really limits on...
Yeah.
They can't really widen to that side. They can widen to the other side, but they got to buy property from Gemma's, which who knows if that, that's even a go.
Is that kind of, is that LTAC driven or is that kind of working with the...
Yes.
Okay.
It's a federal grant.
Jeff, why, why can't we go on the canal bank? I mean, instead of being right on the roadway, I mean, right in back of Gemma's is a canal that could be a free right. And then coming up to turn right to go to McCall, Gary's got all of that acreage right there by the business park. I mean, does it have to be at the intersection or can we create another access?
We can make it look like the flying Y.
If it's safer, I don't care what it looks like at the end of the day.
Exactly what you're looking at, exits and entrances and it's something to look at. I'll bring it up to them.
It's a safety issue. I mean, if they can't do it at the intersection, what can they do?
Right.
In order to look at something different.
Surely ITD though has got some, some option there. Don't they have a 200-foot right of way?
Not through there.
Probably all 100 feet through there.
If that.
If that, there.
I think that's why they remodeled the Merc last time instead of tearing it down because if they tore it down, they would have had to move it back 50 feet and that would have left them a 20-foot store.
Well, I'm just, I guess my point is that somebody's thinking about this and in contact with ITD to say...
I've already put the bug in their ear last year about it, so.
The other question I had is, I understand there's a gravel pit past the pickleball courts that's a private owned gravel pit.
I don't know if Nusula's pit's been depleted. That's something that Granite's been hauling out of, but I don't know if it's been depleted or not.
Well, my concern is if we, if it's not, if we're still hauling a lot of gravel out there, we're going to have to sign that road that you can't park in the road and block those guys. And then there's going to be an issue with dust. So maybe you could find out from Granite if they're done with that pit or what's the plan, if they're going to expand. Because I think that could impact this as well if we have dump trucks going by there. Fortunately, this is on the west side of the road, so hopefully it won't get too dusty.
There is another road out. I'm wondering if we talk to them about using that as a road? Is there is another access point on the side of our property?
Kind of a swamp. It's a lot of heavy trucks on it would sink into, into underwater.
It would need a lot of work.
Okay.
Doable.
But I think, you know, if we're going to turn this into an overall park later on, those are the kind of things that we've got to take care of now because we don't want semi dump trucks going through the middle of a park every five minutes.
But make their wiffle balls kind of go in weird places.
Jeff, they could also come through the pit, though. I mean, I'm looking at a road that goes, there's a Y. When the left side goes back to the road, the right side kind of comes through your guys' section of it.
But I think these guys have a right of way on this road to access that pit.
They have a legal right.
They have a legal right to use that.
That was official right of way to that gravel operation.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, but the pickleball have a good plan, you know, for their parking and all that stuff. So it'd just be a matter of just making sure that we don't impede that in any way, you know? Because it's still, it is a right of way, a good right of way.
And then ITD puts the road, the signage up on the highway, correct?
You got to get a permit from them.
Which is a brown sign. We'd have to get that permit to do that, but we'll do that as we're building the court, I'm assuming, and not earlier or later.
A good time for our support is when they, when you, when the actual plans start to come in together for that intersection work and for us to jump into that with our support.
A letter from the commissioners would probably be great.
Yeah.
And that intersection is now's the perfect time to really put, put a foot in the door and...
Well, we had our, a meeting with ITD. They're kind of, you know, it's not very old, so they, they're aware of all our, some of our concerns about that stuff.
Well, we've been bothering them for years to do more turnout lanes up here, but it's all based on traffic, crashes and fatalities, which is really bizarre to me. But like after the fact, we'll fix it. But we haven't gotten anywhere. So I think this is something we may have to push a little harder on. And if it takes a letter from us to help with that, I would certainly be willing to do that.
Well, we've got to widen the intersection out for our new road because they witnessed it. I heard a truck coming northbound, Jake brake on. And I told my engineers, I go, turn around, get your phones out because there's a big truck coming around the corner right now. And it was a long low boy and he put a tire in the far ditch. If there would have been cars sitting there, he would have stopped on the highway until those cars moved. Perfect opportunity, but they, they've got it on video, so.
Good, good. Then I have one more question for Doug. I'm assuming that we would have to budget for this extra 200,000.
We would, Mr. Chairman. We would budget it in fiscal year 2024's budget.
I want to make a point, though. Our survey stated that, I mean, the, either the second or the third highest priority for the community was using ARPA funds for recreation purposes. I think we need to identify what that pool of funds may be and use some of our ARPA money.
Great idea.
And let Larry's team direct where those resources would be spent. So it's not going to be just for you guys. There's a lot of things going on, but maybe we can be helpful with some of those ARPA funds.
I had envisioned that it was kind of a list when we get down to the, we have to make a decision time, a list of things that we could kind of prioritize off that list. There's a lot of unknowns yet.
I had a question for Kathy Muir, if she's still on the phone. Are you still there, Kathy?
Yep.
Okay. Is it possible that the grant would be more likely to be, that would be more likely to be able to get it if there was more land identified as recreation? I mean, if, right now, it's just our little three acres plot that is for the pickleball. Would it be better if it was a larger parcel? Would the National Park Service be more likely to give us the money?
Well, ultimately, you need to score it well with the advisory committee and then we move forward with the priority list from Idaho to the National Park Service. The National Park Service is really mostly there to cover all of the environmental and clearances that are required at a, you know, federal level. But the priority list of what projects we're going to fund in Idaho is with the committee, not with the National Park Service. So it doesn't, it doesn't matter if you have a bigger piece of property or not.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, and if I'm looking at the map right, this is on the west side of that road. And we were talking about the ground on the east side, the bigger flatter area as far as a, a bigger park someday. Is that correct? Because everything west of here is county shop stuff. Been mined out.
The east side of that was where we were going to put the housing. That was the original conversation. But the larger parcel to the back where it has all of the pools and that type of thing, that, that's all going to become the park. So we'll go back to this area.
Where's the pickleball on here? Where, right up here, isn't it?
Right on the corner.
Yeah, what I'm saying is we can't go this direction. We got to go that direction.
Or back.
Or maybe back.
Yeah. So this is where Larry had identified originally because there's already ponds back there that could be stocked and planted.
So the, the, actually, the boundary area for the Land and Water Conservation Fund has to be defined by a map. It is the plan of Valley County Pickleball to fund the development of that map. And there are very specific requirements. As example, the access road, if that's not part of the Land and Water Conservation Fund identified boundary area, then there has to be sufficient documentation of the easement so that the public outdoor recreation access can be guaranteed.
So we would not put that in your ground, however, we could provide an easement to you to get...
Right, right. So that would be the question is, do we want to put, make the larger boundary area with the park included? Or do we want to stick with the, basically the pickleball area? And we would ask Jeff for that to go all the way to the road just because that's a natural boundary area to go to East Lake Fork. And, and that could be the boundary area. We just need to get with crestline engineering and have them start working on developing what, that, that boundary map. There are some requirements for it.
Jeff, is that an easement back to that on Nusula pit or is that a deeded right of way? Do you know?
I'd have to dig it up and see what it is. I think it's an easement.
Can I chime in here for a second?
Sure.
I think the question is, when I was out there, there's a, there's a dirt road that goes into where the pickleball court is going to be. Is that, is that a county road or what, what is that designated at? Because if you put the boundary up to that road and it's already a county road, you don't have to have an easement as long as there's an access from a county road into the park.
And that's what Jeff's going to find out. But I think it's an easement. I don't think it's a deeded right of way to that pit that's north of there. I think that is a county road for sure, so. Oh, yeah.
It, it is just an easement for that gravel operation.
Okay. Anything else? We got to move on, we're out of time. Thank you, Evelyn. Great report. Hopefully we can get this going.
Thanks for all the hard work.
Yeah.
So you've, have you been able to coerce the tennis ball players into helping you?
Don't go down that way.
So I guess my, my last question real quick would be, should we start drafting a updated MOU to come back that basically outlines all of this, the responsibilities? Is that, would that be our next step?
I think that's a great idea. Yeah, I think that's a great idea. And Larry and Dave can help you with that.
Okay, okay.
Get all this stuff down and then we'll sign it. And that, in case we get replaced, the plan can still go on.
Okay. Well, I hope if you do get replaced, we'll be seeing you on the pickleball court. Not that, not that that's what I want.
I can call my recycling up and play pickleball.
My friends I was with last night said, can they actually enclose that? They're very excited about this court. Can we put a cover over it? And I went, let's get the court.
Let's do this first, one thing at a time, yeah. Well, thank you so much. We appreciate everyone's support of this project. Thank you.
Have a great day. Okay, we're going to move right on down. Sorry, Pat, we're running a little late. This next item is an action item. This is the approve, approval and signature of our new next plan provider agreement. So Pat, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you.
I already did this.
Uh, no, we approved, we approved moving forward with them, but we didn't approve the contract. So with that, I did have the contract sent out to you. I do have the cover sheet. It's all signed.
That was my next question.
Yep, yep. It's all been through Oki. And there are two agreements. One of them is the service agreement, administrative services agreement that talks about what they will do. And then the other one is the business brother. I hate it when my brain goes blank.
Financial part?
Yeah.
Pat, when did you send that agreement?
It's in part of your packet with Gabby.
Yep.
So...
Business associates agreement. I couldn't spit that out for anything.
It's, oh my gosh, I just lost it.
But I do have copies for signing. I just need to have you all.
FSA agreement.
It's just a standard flex agreement and it's just letting us know that they will do so much and we'll do so much and then we can, and then we will start getting people enrolled in the flex plan.
And Pat, can you remind me again, is this a percentage of payroll that they get paid?
No.
There's no dollar figures in this.
Yes. It's $5 per participant with a $65 minimum per month. And that's what the administrative fees are. So when people take money out, that, all that money goes, they take care of the account. It takes care of administering the claims and they provide us with debit cards. So when we go to the doctor and it's part of the deductible or it's a prescription or whatever, we can swipe our debit card and it comes out of that account.
Okay. So everybody good with this? Need a motion to approve?
Move that we approve the new flux plan administrator?
No, second that.
Who can second it? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thanks for finding somebody. That could have been a little tougher.
Thank you.
Okay, our next agenda item is an action item. Cindy, come on up. This is a request for a setting of a hearing date for PUD 22-02 Valley Meadows.
Yeah, so the August PNZ Commission hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commissioners recommended approval of Valley Meadows at PUD. And so the Board of County Commissioners need to set a hearing.
And that's a month out? That'd be 30 days?
Yeah, I need it 30 days out.
So we're looking at September when?
I'm looking at, I was hoping, well, this is already the 29th. Before, I was looking at September 26th, since you guys don't have a meeting.
No.
So I was hoping that you would set a special meeting October 4th. So we have set a special meeting on the 29th to pay bills, September 29th.
That's only like a half an hour.
We're out on the 3rd and we are out on the 11th. We're going to have to have a meeting on the 4th.
On the 4th, it looks like, yeah.
What, what day? October or September?
It's a Tuesday.
October 4th, it's a Tuesday?
Over, yeah.
I think that's going to have to be our county commissioner meeting.
We're going to have five that month?
We won't because we are out on the 11th if you're going to go to that fire, the cybersecurity and preparedness meeting.
No, I'm not. You said you were going to that.
Ed is on vacation that week, so we're not going to be able to have...
That's not going to work. Can we move the 11ths to the 4th? Doug, is the 11th the bill, bill paying day?
It technically would be, yes, sir.
And the 10th is a federal holiday. So the 4th, we could pay bills then, but if not, you know, we're, we're back to the 17th with you and I here because Ed will still be on vacation. And that's the day the lake management plan is going to be presented also.
We also have...
On the 17th.
I have it on my phone that we have the 29th as the county commissioner, September 29th.
That's our meeting. That's our mission convention.
We were just going to do that.
Hey, what was it, something short?
Yeah, we were going to pay bills that day on the 29th.
Are you going to be here on the 29th?
No, because the meeting starts at, I have meetings starting at nine o'clock. You probably should too.
On IEC? It gets done on Wednesday.
Starts Monday. They moved it from Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday to Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Starts Monday. They moved it from Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday to Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Yeah, it gets done Wednesday afternoon. For Thursday, we should be home, shouldn't we?
So, what I'm hearing you ask is?
We do it the twenty-ninth.
I thought you guys had set a special one on the twenty-ninth.
Well, that was just to pay bills, but if we need a longer one to do this. Does that make sense?
That, that would work if the commissioners were inclined to have a full commissioner meeting that day, and not just a commissioner meeting to address claims. We can add this to the twenty-ninth of September, Cindy.
The Valley Meadows, we would have to get notice out today.
Can you do that?
Thirty days.
Or do you want us to, otherwise, we're looking at the middle of October, Cindy.
Well, October fourth.
October fourth as well.
October fourth is when I was, that's a Tuesday.
So, wouldn't the fourth be our regular meeting anyway?
So, the third is the Monday, and that's the day of the.
Economic Development Conference.
I say that we make October fourth our regular meeting.
You're not gonna get that note today, so let's shoot for October fourth.
Because there's a, you know, there's a lot of people we need to notice.
And can, so Doug, you wanna move the twenty-ninth meeting to the fourth?
That would be a decision for commissioners to make. We could do that.
Will that hold up?
The bills, though?
I mean, by two days, commissioners, I think it will be all right.
Okay, so that would be my vote. Then would be to cancel the twenty, September twenty-ninth meeting, move it to October fourth, and make it a full day, whatever we need, depending on agenda. Does that work with everybody?
Same with me. And then knowing that we won't have a meeting the following week, the seventeenth would be our next meeting.
So, the eleventh would be canceled? It's gone and you're gone, right?
Right. And you're not, you're not gonna go to that?
I don't think so. If you're going, I mean, I was gonna go if nobody else was, but if you're going, I don't think all of us need to be there and come back and report.
October fourth at what time?
We started at nine. We can do bills first, and then nine-thirty do the hearing. Would that work, Doug?
Yes, sir.
Just make that a regular commissioner day, Doug, and schedule whatever.
Yeah, it depends on agenda.
Yeah, just put it on the agenda for whatever time.
So, we're.
You need a time, though, Cindy. We'll do nine-thirty.
Nine-thirty, and then you'll carve me out?
An hour, two?
Probably.
You wanna just do it till then? Okay.
Yeah.
We'll just go, we'll have that matter set until the commissioner's recess for lunch.
Right. Depends upon how many people show up.
Right.
One of those hearings.
Long hearing, two and a half hours.
It won't be that long, but you never know.
I would defer to Cindy about how long she thinks this.
So, Doug, we're gonna have to, we have to put this on the agenda to cancel these meetings? So, then we're gonna cancel October eleventh as well? Correct?
Correct. October fourth at nine-thirty will give you a lot of time to deliberate.
Will. Okay, yeah, we'll have. So, October fourth at nine-thirty. I'll make a motion that we set the public hearing date for PUD Valley Meadows on October fourth at nine-thirty in the morning. Have a second?
Second.
Who's a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
That's it. Okay, our next agenda item is, already passed, so we can't have it. No, I'm just kidding. This is an action item, a request for reconsideration for the McCall area impact CUP twenty-two dash oh-three. Brian, come on up. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, yes, this item was before you guys earlier. Um, it was, you guys voted to deny the condition use permit. The next step after that, prior to the applicant seeking judicial review, is to formally request reconsideration with you guys. Um, the applicant is online to make her case as to why you should reconsider it.
Okay, and can you remind me what her name is?
This is Willow Polian.
Willow?
Yes.
Can you hear us, Willow?
Yes.
Okay, so, so at this time, I'll turn it over to you to make your request.
How's everybody doing? Good, thank you.
Before we get started, Brian, did you send us any kind of, anything to preview on this?
Um, I forwarded an email along outlining their reasoning. Um, I don't know if it was.
I don't think I've seen it.
I have it here.
But we've already done the facts and conclusions, correct?
Yeah, you already signed finding conclusions.
So, at this time, Willow, we'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
Brian, do you?
Okay. Am I on?
Yep, you're on.
Okay, how's everybody doing?
Okay.
Um, well, I am here to ask you all to please reconsider. Um, I felt like last time, I didn't get much of a reasoning of why we got told no, and I don't fully understand it. From the roads' point of view, you, now that we have a retaining wall out front, you barely can see any of our equipment unless you are driving very slow trying to look. That would be the only way you could even see it. Uh, the only people that could see it would be the property behind us, and it's, I mean, it's like a couple pieces of equipment parked out there when we are here. to see if that's something they can put on their property to sell it. Uh, we feel like we've gone pretty good over with the neighbors. And, yeah, I would like you to reconsider it. Uh, there are sixteen other places on Sampson Trail that people have their equipment parked at their places. And the only reason I feel like that we ever got complaints in the beginning is because we started getting complaints about the way our place looked shortly after we moved in, and we had that chimney fire, and we had construction workers, we had lots of people parked here, we had tons of stuff going on here that wasn't even our own doing. Now that it is just us, I get compliments from multiple people all over town about how good our place looks, how much better it looks, and how good of a job we are up, upkeeping it. And I've had multiple people comment and say that they see no reason why we shouldn't be allowed to be able to park our equipment here. So, yeah, that's, I guess, my argument. I'm asking you all to please reconsider. And if that's not something you are willing to do, I would appreciate a reasoning why.
This is one acre, is this correct?
You, you weren't here on this one. This was, Ed and I were here, and I think our concern was that if we started this trend, it would go clear through the neighborhood.
I did listen to that presentation.
I think we had eight people opposed. You remember, Brian? Eight or nine?
Something along those lines, yes.
I wasn't here. I did listen to the full presentation. I guess I would have voted differently than you guys did, only because I feel like they should have been given a timeframe that was reasonable. I think five years was too long. However, I think the recommendation from the city of McCall was one year or two years in order to.
Uh, that was my recommendation, was five years.
Was five?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, okay, so I think that was too long.
Brian, I'm not hearing that. You're, I'm hearing that came back, you're coming back with the very same proposal originally, and that included a five-year grace period.
The, I guess, the, uh, what I had put in my original staff report was a five-year window. But you were, as, as a decision-making body, would be eligible to change that condition of approval.
But you didn't, you didn't come back to us with that proposal as a conditional approval. No.
So, we can, we can still make a decision based upon, I mean, she's asking for reconsideration. We can still decide that we would change that timeframe, just to allow them a little more time in order to do that. I mean, I concur. The one thing that I'm having in question is, we have that Sampson Trail bike path that we're gonna be working on, not knowing what side of the road that's gonna be on. Will this impact, you know, that? But again, it's.
We asked that question during the hearing the day, said it doesn't, it's one thing they don't know what side yet, but it shouldn't impact, impacting on either side.
Okay. I don't know. I just, I feel like the consideration should be the timeframe that's being allowed. The use is there. I understand the neighbors don't like that use, and it needs to change, and I concur with that. I just think five years is too long, so I would recommend something, you know, less than that, and I'm saying two years. Make that change, because it is, it's, it's not industrial use, it's not business use through there, it is residential use through there. It has been, Sampson Trail is a continual source of concern for the city and the county, because people are trying to use it for industrial purposes or storage area, and that's not appropriate for that road. But I think denying it totally and forcing them out immediately is not workable for a company to do that. They have to have time to go out, find something else, and, and/or construct their home outside that area. So, that would be my feedback.
Well, and part of our discussion on that was that you could store their equipment in a storage facility.
There just aren't any, honestly.
I don't know, I don't know about that.
In McCall, it's very difficult to find someplace to store this type of equipment.
So, you know, getting back to the bottom line with it, it was, and Willow, and that's basically a whole point you heard, but I did not want to go. I don't, I don't feel at all comfortable. It's a very long period of time to, to take care of that. And the reason it being, five years is just, as you know, a long time in planning. And it's very easy to get entrenched, and something comes along in five years, and all of a sudden, that's just off the table. And it's, it happens. We've seen it happen. And to ask, actually ask us to forgive an operation like that for five years, and, and especially in that particular area. And as you know, that really is getting to be a, a thorough affair there. It's a bypass of Highway fifty-five in part of the city. It's just point. It's, granted, not official, but that's what's happening. But the deal with, actually asked in some of us to forgive that for five years, we thought was inappropriate, Mr. Chairman.
Well, my concern, just like Sherri stated, is there's other people out there kinda doing the same thing, and maybe been getting away with it. I don't know. Or maybe they have a permit to do it. I don't know those, the, the particular folks, but if we allow this to happen, you're gonna have a whole bunch more folks come in and ask for the same thing along there, and now you've changed it from a residential area to an industrial area. And those eight folks that came in that have residences, I think that's very unfair to them.
Yes, and also, it's, we, I don't think we should be sending the message to people. I, I don't care if they move here, they buy a residential property, and all of a sudden, now it needs to be industrial. Those things need to be researched before, you know, at least I think. And I don't, and I'm not opposed to allowing a grace period for this, you know, to change that back to industrial. However, I want to make it clear that that's part of it. You, you establish, you establish, I guess, prior, or, um, case.
What you don't want is somebody to exist there for so long, and somebody else to buy a property thinking, well, that's been there. I'm gonna be approved to you.
That's a.
And that's why the five years is not appropriate?
It's not.
I mean, it's, so, I think something less would be the way that I would vote. I don't know how you guys feel about that, but to tell somebody immediately, you have to move with this type of equipment, I think is difficult for a business to do. This is a viable business. They do a lot of work in our community. They're one of our largest snowplowers.
Sherri, then you make an argument, this is a viable business. This is practically, this was brought to us as a new business.
No, they've been in business.
They're asking to do, that's, that's permit. It's asking us to allow business there.
So, this may be a new acquisition for them.
Yeah.
Like they've been operating for a few years now, but generally, they just leave their equipment on whatever worksite they are operating in.
I was under the impression that they, this was a brand-new business.
Yeah, they just, that's, that's their application.
This is not a new business.
Yeah, but it is a new site for that business, and have, if they've actually been in business here several years, or whatever, they surely understand this conflict, and so.
I don't know how long they've been on that site, but I can tell you here in just a minute. How long have you guys actually owned that property?
Uh, two years now.
And I think the conflict, honestly, Ed, is that other people are doing it in that community. I mean, we need to clean it up. We need to enforce your guys' ordinance there. I mean, it is residential, correct?
Yes.
So, it's time to send letters to the other people that are out of compliance and make them comply also. I just think to, to tell somebody you gotta be out tomorrow is really difficult to do.
So, you, Brian, on those other businesses, just clear that up just a little bit, too. You have one at least on the north end there, um, the construction.
Yep.
Business. Is that a grandfathered construction?
Yeah, the one at the very far north end of Sampson Trail there is existing non-conforming. They've been expanding a little bit, and I need to write them a letter.
Yeah.
But then, yeah, there are several others along there that also have echoes and things parked alongside.
That one.
So, this, you know, it's, it's a little bit bigger issue than this one particular deal, and it's important to that area, and that zoning. And I, it's not like I have any kind of, you know, bone to pick with any particular one of them, but just the planning process. And trying, you can't add something to something that's already, you got issues with, and it, any kind of a, you know. However, now said that, and that's where my issue was with it, but is primarily that we want, we're asking for a long-term grace, and that's just, that's just way too much. And I, I want it to be very clear that it has to be a very short-term grace, and they got to move along, you know, and comply. I mean, in other words, get the neighborhood back into that residential that it's zoned for. That's, okay.
Pricing of grounds coming down, you know, that, where they might be able to store something off-site. But I, if, if you were asking us to reconsider the initial recommendation, I would recommend that we allow a two-year grace period for them to move, not five.
I won't go with over one for my votes, and that's where I'm at right now.
Um, my concern is the fact that we have complied with the planning and the rules and built a residential facility, and now we come in and say, uh, we're gonna let them do it for a year or two or five, it doesn't matter, violated what they thought they were gonna have when they built their house. Those eight folks stated that in that hearing, so to me, when this was brought to us, this was a new business. I didn't know they'd been here two years or whatever. They wanted to establish all this construction stuff on their site. That's not fair to those eight residences that came in and said, wait a minute, we live here. Well, no, I can't support changing my mind at all. I think we made the right decision, and, and I'm sorry it's put stress on their business,
And we're going to our chairman's office.
Oh, okay.
Perfect. And then from there, we'll go to the senior center or the community center.